And this evening's meeting has, the first part of the meeting being the public hearing on the budget. And so we will open the public hearing on the budget right now, go through that process, close that part of our meeting, and then open the regional school committee meeting portion of the agenda. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Keo. We, for those at home watching, we do not have an audience, so we may sit in our seats to do this presentation this evening. Or if you want to stand, that's fine.
No, this is fine.
And we have Don on slides.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So, are we're, is that not responding?
Oh, that's fine. It was like, it queued back up.
Gotcha. Okay, so, just to kind of preface the whole budget conversation. As an administration, we obviously bring forth the budget to the school committee for your consideration. And we, like you, care very much that whatever we're asking for is consistent with our district's mission, and hence, we have included the mission in this, in this presentation, that we share in the mission to inspire, challenge, and support all students as they discover and pursue their full potential. We also, however, as you know, are working on a strategic plan. And that work has progressed considerably. And when we have our next joint meeting, I hope that the school, the joint school committees will approve the strategic plan moving forward. But within the proposed strategic plan thus far are these, these five kind of big bucket goals. And the one that, that certainly is relevant in this regard, these will all be relevant. They really will be. You know, innovative teaching and learning, and health and well-being of students and staff, and partnerships with families and communities, safe and innovative facilities, and resource efficiency. So, we want these to be our, our big picture goals moving forward. We want the public to know, and the community to know, and the parents, and the students and staff to know that we are 100% committed to maintaining our excellence. But we also know that we have a fixed income, so to speak, and we have to be responsible. So, that's kind of the backdrop for all that we did as we built this budget. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Claire, so that you can present where we've gone.
Great, thank you. So, we'll start talking about next year's budget with the focus of the items that we looked at as the regional school committee reviewed the budget, and as administration and the staff of the district put the budget together. It was to review and revise, look at revising any educational services that may need looking at, to evaluate and maintain our grounds and facilities, which, as we all know here at the region, is quite extensive and a variety of issues to deal with. As Andrew said, we wanted to remain fiscally responsible and mindful of financial constraints here at the region, in the town of Sherburne, and in the town of Dover, and to continue trend budgeting, which we have done in the last few years. And I think our hashtag, if I'll say that, was #spendsmarter. So, how could we do what we're doing, or what are the new things that we would like to do, and was there a better way to finance some of those items, or perhaps make choices about other things we were doing and providing? Of course, we have to comply with federal and state mandates, and we have to fund all contractual obligations. We received guidance from the finance committees of both towns. Dover's guidance in a nutshell was level service, and Sherburne was level funded with a 1.5% increase for salaries. There is a reserve set aside in Sherburne if departments have an ask above the 1.5%, and that was part of the guidance we received from the town of Sherburne. As we review the FY19 budget, we remind everyone that the drivers of, the fiscal drivers of our budget are the enrollment projections. They remain constant for the foreseeable future, with over 1,200 students at the region. Collective bargaining and contractual obligations are budget drivers as well, and all contracts have been negotiated for the FY18, FY20 time period. Healthcare costs reflects changes to plan, design, and offering, and we continue to talk about and work towards cost avoidance, cost containment. We're very cognizant of the pressures, the escalating healthcare costs put not only on the regional budget, but on the finances of both towns. And we have noted that the healthcare offerings that we have here at the region are keeping pace or ahead of the marketplace changes in the industry. So, what makes up the operating, FY19 operating budget? It's a proposed budget of $24,614,000, which is a 2.11% increase to the previous year, or $509,000 increase to last year's budget. The revenues to support our budget come from various sources. The member town's assessment for the FY19, that's Dover and Sherburne combined together, is $371,750 increase. There is additional revenue from chapter 70 and 71 in our FY19 budget of $124,771. And the use of excess and deficiency in our assessment is $12,710. As I mentioned, we looked at expenditures, and we note that enrollment is in the range of 1,200 to 1,223 students at the region as of October, or, and projected for next year. The educator salary increases are 2% on the last, on the top step, and 1% within the matrix. Some people, I said last step, sometimes the top step is also referred to as the last step. All other contractual salary increases are at 2%, and that's an increase of $575,000 across the board on the salaries line in the FY19 budget. As of February 1st, educators have to confirm with us their retirement intent, and that led to those retirements that we learned about on February 1st meant a $150,000 salary reduction in the FY19 budget. Employee-related insurance costs, including Norfolk County workers' compensation, Medicare, employer tax, and healthcare, is an increase of $157,000 in the budget. And, as I mentioned before, trend budgeting, looking at where and how we've been spending money over a period of time, has led to a $39,500 reduction in the FY19 budget. You may not be aware that we have a five-year bus contract. Next year's the fourth year of the contract, and that increase is $6,664. The scheduled debt principal and interest payments went down $22,300. So those are the ins and outs of the FY19 budget that are at a significant level that folks might be interested in. Our next slide is revenue projections, with our funding coming from town assessments, state funding, student fees, and other monies, and $150,000 of excess and deficiency funds to have a total projection of the $24 million. We'll have questions at the end, because this is the budget hearing, Brendan, if that's okay? Thanks. The next slide is an overview of what the, how we comprise, what comprises the assessments for both Dover and Sherburne, and the operating budget, debt, and the total assessment. And you can see that Dover's assessment has gone up 1.91% and Sherburne 1.56%. And for those, it's noted above that we use the statutory assessment method here at the regional district and have for a number of years. The next slide talks about the capital items that we've discussed probably since September, I believe, with our capital subcommittee and our business manager, and that total is Asphalt paving, fire detection field sensors, flash storage, the courtyard roof, walk-in freezer, the boys' locker room floor, concrete work. That, the list is presented here tonight, has been vetted not only by the regional school committee, the regional school committee subcommittee on capital, but the capital planning committees of both towns. These items will be funded through an intermunicipal agreement that both Dover and Sherburne Selectmen have signed, and the regional school committee has signed. And, as we do every year, our operating budget wouldn't be what it is without the support of many members of our community. That support is well over $300,000 to the regional district alone. That's Dover Sherburne Boosters, the Dover Sherburne Education Fund, Friends of the Performing Arts, our two-parent organizations, Positive and PTO, the Mudge Foundation, Needham Bank, and many company and private donations, or donations from individuals that we've received over the years. So, we thank all of them, whether your student is in performing arts, or athletics, or robotics, or other activities. There's additional investment from our community supporting them, and we thank everyone for And that completes the financial part of the public hearing, where we then open up for questions, and I believe we have ones this evening.
Thanks, Brenda.
Hi, Brendan.
Brendan Daly, Sherburne Advisory. So, just a quick question on the, the use of E&amp;D.
Right.
So, it looks like there was an increase of 12,000 over what, which used last year, so last year was about 138K, is that correct?
Correct.
So, how did you come up with the figure of 150?
We're taking one of the budget memos, we actually, that's comprised of positive variances in both our revenues and expenditures that we're already predicting that we're going to have this year. So, we're taking sort of leftover money from this year's budget that we've already identified, and applying it to next year's budget.
Okay. And in last week's meeting, there was a discussion about, the max is supposed to be 5% per statute, and whether or not it should be less than that. And I was quoting around the website, and according to the policy, it's supposed to be in a 3% to 4% rate. So, I don't know if there's any appetite to increasing the amount of E&amp;D to decrease the amount of stuff.
Okay, we'll take that.
It's just that the policy says 34%.
We'll take that question on board. Any others? And I will say, Brendan, that following, as it comes to mind now, following that policy, in the last few years, there has been discussion at school committees about, you know, 3% to 4%, 3% to 5%. And so there'll be information in our minutes from past years about that discussion, but we will take that on board as an item and discuss it. Thank you. So, with that, I would like to close the, oh, Michael, sorry.
So, just as a point of clarification, one point of E&amp;D is roughly, how many dollars at this point?
So, our, our E&amp;D at 5% right now, I said at those, the last meeting, it was 1.4. That's with before the giveback, because it hasn't rolled through our financials yet. It's $1,200,000, is 5% right now of our $24 million budget from last year.
So, 1% would be $200,000.
Okay. Anything else, Michael?
No, I just wanted to get a sense of translating percentages to the budget dollars that we're discussing at this point.
Right. So, we will close the public hearing on the budget and open the March Regional School Committee meeting. I just wanted to turn the meeting over to Dr. Keo for a few minutes to talk about safety, which has been on everyone's mind the last couple of weeks.
Yes. Thank you very much. Clearly, after the events of April, February 14th, excuse me, people have been anxious, I think, across America. Educators have been anxious. All of my colleagues that I've been in touch with are having the same kinds of conversations that, that we've been having, and that I've been having with you folks. So, I just want to kind of clear up, just so people understand, hopefully people at home will understand and hear this message, that we actually were looking at our security for Dover Sherburne and Dover Sherburne Regional before any of these events. It was on our list of something that people had expressed concern to us about, both teachers, administrators, family members, that they wanted us to make sure that we had the latest protocols in place, that we were using current practices, that our facilities were being assessed. So, we had identified this early on as something that we wanted to do. The sad events of the 14th, although many systems had a knee-jerk reaction to that because they almost felt like they had to, we really didn't have to, because we already had these plans in place. What we were able to do, however, was to contact Synergy Solutions and see if we could move this process up. Synergy Solutions is the security firm that we're working with. They specialize in auditing facilities, going step-by-step through facilities to see if in fact what we have in place is adequate. Does it meet our needs? Does it meet our physical needs? Does it meet our, our cultural needs? The culture of an open campus, for example, which many private schools have. I mean, which, they'll look at all that stuff. That's what they specialize in. And then they'll give us their suggestions. So, we were able to, the other thing, the things that they will do is they'll look at our protocols and our practices. So, we have these written down. It's not like Dover Sherburne's never looked at these things. We have an emergency response team at the district-wide level, and we have emergency response teams at the building levels. Truth be told, we don't always meet regularly, and we haven't always met regularly, and this has prompted us to revisit that and get back into those regular meetings. And I've asked all of the principals to make sure that those teams are meeting consistently and having conversations about our existing protocols, and they are. And, so we feel good about that. The schools across the district practice for emergencies. They've, they've always practiced for emergencies. That's not a new thing. We had a drill this year, and that is in essence a practice for lockdowns. So, but what we really hope to get from this, this Synergy Solutions experience and working with them, is the audit of our facilities, is a review of our protocols to make sure that they are the most current, accepted best practices, and training. And it was interesting to me that they, in our first kickoff conversation, which we had a few, last week actually, they highlighted the importance of education being a huge part of this, of people knowing what to do in the event of an emergency. So, this is a part of our plan. We will have training with our, our faculty, and we are setting up those dates for them. And I know that it's good training, because I've been through it. The folks who conduct that training are experts, again. These are people who are on the regional SWAT team. One is, I believe, a commander on the regional SWAT team. So, they really understand what the best practices are, and so our teachers will receive this training. So, we're, we're feeling like we're in a good place, but it's still tough, because people are worried. And they want assurances from all of us that nothing bad can happen. And I'm a parent, so I worry too. I understand that, that feeling. But I'm also a realist, and I know that, that nothing is guaranteed. In many of these instances of attacks on schools or public places, good practices were in place. They were. So, I am of the opinion, as I've written to the faculty, the administration, all of you, the families, I am of the opinion, I absolutely believe that our best approach is to ensure that we do not allow any students to fall through the cracks, that we make sure that the kids get the supports that they need, that we make sure that our students who are at risk are identified, that we make sure that no kid feels like they don't belong here, or has so much anger built up that they want to take it out on the members of this school community. That's where the rubber hits the road, and that's where we have a deep focus right now with our hashtag #WeAreDS initiative. Again, that was in place before any of this went on, because we know the importance of it. So, I want to, I really do want to assure people that we are on top of it, that we do take it seriously, that we love the kids. That's why we do what we do. We love the kids, and we care very deeply for the kids, and we don't want anything to happen to them. So, we are, we're on it. And I just would prefer that if people have concerns, they, they reach out to me, and I'll be glad to speak to them, rather than kind of start chattering in the various social media outlets, because that's not usually productive. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that with March 14th approaching, for those who don't know, there's, it's been identified as kind of a national walkout day. That's a student-led movement across the country, where kids are saying, "We want to show our support for the kids of Parkland, Florida, or the victims of Parkland, Florida, by walking out in unison as a student body to pause, take pause for 17 minutes." It's, in my conversations with John, the, the kids have expressed interest in doing it as students.
Correct.
And Scott has had students approaching him as late as today. Up until today, we hadn't really heard at the middle school level, but, you know, the 14th isn't tomorrow. So, this is coming, and if it does solidify, we will certainly let the families know exactly how it will be dealt with, and how the administration will respond to it. But in my conversations with both Scott and John, the three of us are of the opinion that, that teaching students about civics through real opportunities is, is in many ways irreplaceable. And I just want to read a quick quote that came from the Commissioner of Education in Massachusetts, Jeff Wilson. And he said, I quote, "We talk a lot here at this board about the importance of teaching students about civic engagement and how democracy works. This is it. This is as real as it gets. If this is not what we call a teachable moment, I don't know what is. And I hope our educators take advantage of this opportunity to help model and teach their students about how we bring about change peacefully in a democracy." So, that's coming from the head of education in Massachusetts. And I think it's a powerful statement. And, so, I commend John and Scott for being receptive to the kids, and for having the conversations with the kids, and giving them a voice in this process. And I'm confident that, that that will go well, whatever transpires. We're still a ways off, again. So, I just wanted to say that right off the bat, to kind of make sure that people.
It's been a lot of conversation.
It's been a lot of conversation, and this was really a good opportunity for me to say something, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we will turn the meeting over to report, and as usual, we start with Mr. Smith of High School.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Graham. A lot of different, exciting things happening at the high school. Today, our Alpine skiing team left Dover and Sherburne at 4:30 a.m. to get on a bus to go to the MIAA state championships, which were held in Charlemont, Massachusetts, which is west of Interstate 91. It's kind of tucked in the, in the corner. Beautiful area, but a long ride. Jeff Parcells went out there with a number of athletic directors from the area as well. Kids did really well, great day. He had lots of great pictures. Boys actually finished fourth in the state, which was great. This past Saturday, I had the pleasure of going to the MIAA state gymnastics meet, and once again, MADS, which is a cooperative team, which has been an incredible opportunity for our young ladies, just like our cooperative hockey, women's ice hockey team is. It's Medfield, Ashland, and Dover Sherburne. They, in the preliminaries, made the cut, and then were able to go to the state championship, and they finished fifth there, which was terrific. Eric Linden wanted to point out, well, actually, this Saturday, will be racing in New York City, representing Dover Sherburne in the 1,000, 1,000 meters. And I'm really excited for him to be running with the nation's best runners.
That's a national superiors.
Which is phenomenal. And really great news from our drama programs. We had a one-act play this past Saturday, which went to Hanover High School as part of the Massachusetts High School Drama Festival. It's actually the first year since I've been here that the high school's been involved. We have sent teams from the middle school previously, and they performed the one-act play, "Our Place," and were one of the schools chosen to move on, which is fantastic, and they are going to be competing again this weekend. So, Carmel and Scott have been sort of juggling each other, because it's the same kids, you know, we're a small school. But it really, once again, is a testament to the quality, and the character, and the talents of our kids. And, you know, you've said this, Dr. Keo, that it's pretty amazing, the caliber of student and student athlete and performer and actor and actress that we have in such a small school system, and that we can compete with virtually anybody. And, so, that's been really exciting, and great things happening, you know, sort of outside of the classroom.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, the middle school.
I have an update as well, not to be outdone by the high school.
I'm sure that's equally, if not better, talented students. More talented students.
Our math counts team went to the state finals last week, and our team came in sixth. We had five students participate. Of the four team members were Eric Yang, Audrey Lynn, Alice Lynn, and Emma Sun, and Sophie Tate competed as an individual. Eric Yang came in 16th out of approximately 150 students in the state. So, outstanding job by math counts. And then, as mentioned in the monthly report, we had four students who were published in the literary magazine, Hutch Magazine, and they were Julie Sullivan with a poem, Marissa Farty with book review, Ava Coker with a poem, and Charlie Stewart with a poem. So, well done by all.
Just a real brief question. Did we field a Model UN team this year?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Yep.
Because it's not around February?
Yes, yes. And we, let me think. I think that we drew Syria, actually, so it was quite interesting for our nation. So, yes, we did.
I won't share that piece of information on the home front, since, since she's already I won't share that piece of information on the home front since, since she's already graduated.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. McCoy, Assistant Superintendent, report.
Thank you. So just an update. I know last spring, there was a lot of discussion about hiring a nutrition outreach coordinator. You had created the new, the wellness policy here as a district, and the implementation guidelines. And out of that came a request to bring someone onboard to help at the regional level in terms of what we're offering, what kids would like to see on the menu, what they're willing to eat, and how we can infuse healthy options in there that they will still eat over time. And we have brought Ms. Nora Saul onboard. Dr. Keo met with her two weeks ago, and she's completed her paperwork, and we're eager to break her onboard. As you know, Ms. Janelle Madden works tirelessly to get the four campuses up and, or the three campuses up and running, and the food out to the kids every day. And this will give us a little bit extra room to be innovative and communicate with the kids and market what we do, both on the website and in real time, to get more students interested in our food options. They can get their nutrition during school day and still have a lunchbox full of snacks for their after-school activities, as well as bringing additional revenue, which can lead to additional options, as you all know. So that's very exciting, and we'll keep you updated as to where the program goes and how it grows over time. The English curriculum review, you probably saw last week an email come out from me asking for feedback on the English program. A lot of parents have responded, and I have been so impressed with the number of people who have responded and added additional anecdotal information as to what's going well with our English program and what we could potentially improve in the future. So I will send a reminder probably next week, saying that the, this debate will be closing, because as you know, there's usually a lot of response in the beginning, and then kind of a lull, and then response at the end. But that's really going to help the English program design next steps. In fact, I had a discussion at the elementary level today about where they want to go, and I think it's in coordination, very much in line with what the middle and high school are thinking about next steps. So that's exciting in terms of bringing up professional development opportunities for K through 12 teachers next year to move us forward. And We Are DS, we touched on that a little bit, with Mr. Kellet and Mr. Smith have opened up their April 3 faculty time, and will be bringing back some of our new member presenters, our more popular presenters, to be giving a second opportunity for faculty to engage and discuss how to have difficult conversations, how to make sure that all of our students are recognized, respected, and engaged. So that's exciting. And I know time is precious. So thank you for making that time, and we'll continue to think proactively next year about how to carve out this time and keep all of the balls in the air as we juggle curriculum and social emotional learning and all of these things. Thank you.
And if I could, do you mind, Ms. McCoy, talking a little bit about our trip today? Because we had, we had a great field trip today.
I was going to leave that to you, but I'd be happy to.
I didn't, I don't think I included it in my report.
I've lied to you neither, because it was today. So we had the opportunity from a Dover family who invited us to attend, although they're Dover residents, their students attend a private school, the Meadowbrook School in Westlake.
Both.
Right.
Meadowbrook and Dover Sherborne.
Okay. So they invited us to attend, to meet with faculty from the Meadowbrook School and learn about both their multicultural initiatives and the work they're doing with kids, K through eight, as well as their STEAM initiatives. So Dr. Keo and I went out today, as well as middle and elementary folks, including administrators and our technology integration specialists and teachers. And we got to have a student-led tour, and Caleb, our student tour guide, was amazing, and he answered all of the questions. In fact, he gave us twice the amount of time he should have. We got to meet with our multicultural director, and she had a lot of insight into how to engage families, as we know, which is the next step in this process, and talking about We Are DS and making sure that parents feel like they're part of We Are DS. And we got to see their Eureka Lab, their Innovation Lab, and hear about all of the research they did, both at the school K through 12 level, but also at the college level, in terms of developing their lab and how they came to where they are and adapting it to fit their needs. They've promised to be a resource moving forward. And I think what's really exciting is they have sparked an interest in our K through eight faculty in terms of innovating and teaching and continuing the great work that we're already doing. And even on the way home, Dr. Keo and I, we were in the same bread truck, and we had an opportunity to debrief and talk about next steps.
You know the one.
So we have some ideas, and we're bringing the faculty, the team, back together on April 2nd. So whether or not they know it yet, they are the preliminary STEAM team, and they're going to be taking a portion of the strategic plan and coming up with an action steps to make it move forward. And it was just, I think it was really inspiring to see, you know, educators from three different schools saying, "This is amazing. We're doing a lot of great things, and we can do better." So that's good.
Thank you very much. So that's, that's actually kind of a nice segue into my little talk about going to superintendent's school. But what was different about today was that it was a group of educators who actually have a lot of influence in this regard, who saw it together and had a chance to talk. That's, this is what was lacking, frankly, from my superintendent's school. I did have the chance, I was lucky, because there was a good contingent who went to Nashville to the, the AASA conference. And so there were many superintendents from, from Massachusetts who, neighbors, including some from directly, direct neighbors, which was fantastic, because we had a chance to talk. But this trip today was a little different, because we're kind of, we were working towards one kind of goal, which is to enhance the Dover Sherborne schools. And you could just see the light bulbs lighting up over people's heads. Things like design thinking, and we do some design thinking, but we, we can do better as a system. That work comes out of Stanford. It's good stuff. It teaches collaboration, problem solving, what to do when you fail, how to redesign and, and continue through that cycle. And it was really right smack dab in the middle of the wall of this innovation lab, which is, by the way, something that they created with a lot of guidance from MIT. So this is where we're going with the strategic plan in terms of enhancing our, our curriculum and instruction. We are going to go out and see what's out there. That's what we want to do. And I understand from the last strategic plan, which I've had a chance to review, that the Academic Excellence Committee did a very similar thing. So Dover Sherborne was probably doing it before Meadowbrook. But the point is that people come away with really great ideas, and what they're doing over there is fantastic. So we thought we could replicate some of that, so we're pretty excited about that. My, my, my conference was excellent. The two highlights really were a presentation by a guy named Bill Daggett, who talks about how education is really changing, though, sorry, not education. Education isn't changing fast enough to meet the changes in the workforce, that the jobs, many of the jobs that our kids will go into haven't even been invented yet. So technology is just moving so quickly, and we need to keep up with it, which certainly connects with this. Our kids need to be prepared for a very technical world, programming, being resilient, knowing how to work on a team, knowing how to problem solve, all of it. So his, his presentation was excellent. The other one was Sal Khan, who started the Khan Academy. He's a really inspirational guy. And I should have included the link, I don't think I did, in to a story. I actually tweeted about it when I was out there. But there, there's a young woman in Afghanistan who was suppressed, like most women, by the Taliban. And her family was able to get her a computer with internet, and she continued her education at great risk to the family through the Khan Academy. And then eventually was accepted to MIT and has since come here. It's an amazing, amazing story. I'm sure you could Google it. Here's a great, great presentation. The one thing that really jumped out at me that I thought was a cool idea was that our juniors now taking the PSAT can opt in to have Khan Academy look at their scores and, and connect them with lessons or units that could prop up their shortcomings. And they promise an increase of 80 points on your scores, which I thought was impressive. So I thought that was a really cool collaboration. It's a good story, and it was inspiring to me. Last but not least, no, that was it. That's it.
Great.
Okay.
I just have one thing, because I don't want Mr. Smith to feel that he's lucked out, because we visited a K through eight school. Your challenge is going to be when these students land on your doorstep in grade nine, how to challenge them. So you can be part of our STEAM team as well.
What we actually, the beauty of this, we came away feeling pretty good about what we do offer, both at the middle school, high school, and at the elementary schools. So there you go.
Thank you. Sounds like an exciting day. And I think we all know, you know, being in groups and being able to network and talk and have conversation with people working on similar topics is a great benefit to not only you as an individual, but to the district and to the schools. So thank you. Next on the agenda is financial reports. Back to Ms. Vittori.
Yes, your, my loss of electricity on Saturday was your gain in your financial report, because I came here for some work and electricity. I was able to dig deeper into a couple of things. So bear with me as I just sort of walk through some of the analysis that was done on Saturday morning. So Chapter 70, as you know, we don't really see a big population of students who decide to go to school choice, but we've seen over the years how all of a sudden we could be surprised by that swing. What happens is they take census twice a year and assess the school districts based on the enrollment as of those dates. So they wait until October to do the first census to make sure everyone's sort of stable. And we don't see our first true school choice assessment until December. So we did see an uptick in December when we received our Chapter 70 revenue, because it was instead of a 400, they had, they had estimated for us to have one school choice student based on our cherry sheet. So we were getting like $400 a month taken out of our Chapter 70. All of a sudden, December spiked to about $3,500, which then tells you that we've had kids opt in to school choice that we...
Which means that they're leaving DS to go elsewhere.
At a charge of...
Yes, they are. They are going to another public school or a, one of the virtual schools, which I think majority of ours are the virtual schools. So I wanted to true up our Chapter 70 projections based on that. And that then brings, we had a positive variance of about 27.5 in the previous reports. I brought that down to 8,800 because of the increase in the chapter, in the school choice assessment. That will, can and will probably fluctuate again, but at least now we are where we are based on the census that was in October. Chapter 71, I've, I've learned a lot too with that. It's not, it is very, you can calculate it, because it is based, it's actual reimbursement on your transportation expense, less any children or students that you have who are within a mile and a half, which we don't have to technically transport. So that's what's filed on our end-of-the-year report for 17. That's what drives your 18 reimbursement. So I noticed when we got our first payment in December that it was a little more than half, because you get two payment, two installments. It was a little more than half of what our cherry sheet was, which I knew meant that we, our cherry sheet was a little low. So I calculated our Chapter 71 based on what was filed in our end-of-the-year report, and increasing our Chapter 71 transportation projections to be a positive variance of 19,500.
How do they know who lives within a mile and a half? Is it length is...
We, no, we report that. So we, we know what streets, and we record that and note that on the end-of-the-year report. And then our auditors are actually in right now, doing our audit compliance of our end-of-the-year report, and they look at all that. That's what theirs, that's what they're paid to do.
A mile and a half by the crow flies, or...
Yeah, I mean, you know, yeah.
Which could be seven miles here.
Well, diameter or radius.
By radius.
Radius of...
Yeah, but by that rule.
By geometry, yes.
Yes. And other roads in Dover seem to lead anywhere other than 10,000.
It is, you know, it's a point here where they do with diameter. It's the same, we have the same addresses every year that's on the outskirts, and then they just take the bus. Trish actually...
And where were we at this, you said you increased that?
Yes. So, so we, we assumed we were going to be at the 421,000. We're really going to be more at like 440,000. So an uptick of 19,500.
Oh, before we were at zero.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, go back to the school choice question?
Yes.
So it's, it's usually, it usually costs us $5,000 to send a student to, say, Ashland or Hollis.
That's hot, right.
But so, then how could it have gone to...
Because the virtual schools.
The virtual schools are not a rounded number.
No, virtual schools are like 6,100. I forget what it is this year, but that's predominantly. Those are the, those are what we usually see. I didn't have a chance to go pull the census, but in previous years, we had like one at Natick and then like two at Teca. And I think we had one at the MBA, at the one that's out in Greenville, I think.
Right.
So that is, my guess is it's a combination of one. I think we still have one student who does go to Natick, and then the other ones are probably virtual.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
At the same time, while I was digging into revenues, I realized that for our miscellaneous revenue, and as I mentioned, when we did the budget for fiscal year 19, that used to be more of our E-rate money. I'm going to go ahead and say we're not going to get anything, just so we can start getting truer projections. I'm not anticipating us getting anything that could be classified as miscellaneous revenue, so I have adjusted our financials for that. In addition, we actually saw in December a significant increase in our interest rate that we're getting on just our normal operating accounts. It went from 0.05% to 0.4%. And so that is giving us, that will give us an increase in what we're getting in just general interest income on top of the CD that we had. So I adjusted the bank interest to account for that, and that gives us a surplus of 12,000 in our interest, which really offsets the 10,000 decrease in our miscellaneous revenue. So all in all, all that work still put us right back at the $3,000 we were at before I did the work. So...
I think I'll have a more confidence...
Now the numbers are going to look great, but I couldn't believe, because at first I'm like, oh, we're up 19,000 here. And then I found out the school choice went down, and then it was, really, seriously, it all came out to be above.
Don, can I ask a question about that, the school choice money?
Yes.
Do we have any, like, a student decides in September that they would prefer to attend a school choice school, an online school or other school choice option, do, do they give us any notice that we will be paying for their tuition?
No. We usually don't know, to be honest with you.
So if, I mean, unless they're here.
Because some of these are the kids who've never maybe even really ever been a student.
Right. They're homeschooled, they're doing the online school.
Exactly.
So is that one of the, like, are we, like, if, say, one, because I know there's some pushback against, like, what's a reasonable amount of E and D? Like, is that part of the reason for having a savings account as a, as a district? Because what if we find out that 20 children, or is that not really something you need to worry about?
I don't think that's something that we've historically, it's going to be significant enough to throw off your budget.
Okay.
Because it, really, if they go to a public school, it's the way, unless they increase the rate, it's literally $5,000 for the year.
Okay.
But it would be more, other unexpected expenses would be why you have the E and D.
If, you know, hurricane, that sort of thing.
Or is it more, I don't, you know, I have a hard time anticipating anything in our budget once we start the year, going severely out of whack. But if you go from a year where everything was okay financially in our towns, and then you roll into the next budget year, and you have another financial crisis, or something comes up in the towns, and they're seeing impacts of their revenue, that's going to ripple back to us around what their guidance would be. So to me, it's more smoothing out major events that come up during the budgeting cycle than it is within the year to...
And it's also there, I mean, not to digress, we'll have another, a bite at this apple at another time, but unlike a town that can raise taxes, we have no other way should something unforeseen, whether to the, to the plant happen, or within contracts, or whatever, what to raise funds. So that's what E and D is.
We have such big expenses coming up over the next three years, with the two roofs and then the $8,000 field, just these big, huge capital items right there, could be something that we should be keeping an eye on with regard to E and D and potential unforeseen expenses.
And what we'll try to do is if, if something comes up... And what we'll try to do is if, if something comes up that was unanticipated, we hope, and it usually works out this way, that something else didn't get spent to the degree that we thought we would have to. So that's what we say, when we say we absorbed it through the budget.
We could think about your capital. We just approved capital for next, you know, for this, the timing is so off that it is nice if something, and we've got a lot of expensive pieces of operations over there. If something came up, we have the ability not to have to wait till the next capital cycle if we needed to.
Right.
The security audit is another perfect example, depending on what recommendations come out of that. So it gives the regional school committee some flexibility in being able to jump on something and not have to wait for the lengthy town approval.
Right. So, yeah, and I'm just, I'm just trying to think about your question earlier tonight. I'm new at this, and so, you know, I mean, my personal budget, I'm a saver, so I feel like 5% in the bank is not enough, actually. I get nervous. They say a month of savings, at least. But, you know, you want 4%, and I want to be, I want to be responsive. So I'm trying to kind of better, thank you for addressing.
And we'll have a more in-depth conversation about that.
Totally get it. I know, I'm new, I don't want to slow us down. But thank you for that interesting question.
No, no. This is why we have meetings.
Thank you. Okay.
So, as you know, we gave back some excess E and D last year, so when you look at your revenue statement, you have to take into consideration that we, the two numbers at the top on your statement that are vet are the, what we had to give back in excess of the 5%. So you have to sort of maneuver your number. So at the bottom, you'll see, taking that, netting that out, it's $30,000 positive revenue variance at this juncture in time. Moving on to the expenses as we sort of at a turning point too, now that all the stipends have been fully encumbered, I was looking at some of the variances, and I am increasing the positive salary variance in the salaries by $13,000 due to, you'll see remaining funds in the academic leadership QPO function code. A little bit of that is unused QPO, but about $8,000 of it is that the, when we budgeted last year for the K-12 Fine Arts Director, that position had been someone who wasn't outside the region. If you know, department chairs have release time built into their sort of job responsibilities, that release time had to be charged to whoever wasn't where the teacher was. So the region had budgeted for not only the stipend, but also the release time that we were having to pay to the school where the K-12 person's salary resided. When that, we had a post-budget change where that person now resides in the region, so we did not need to include that money in the stipends.
Okay.
So that is money that will not obviously be spent this year. And as you know, we'll, assuming that we're going to at this juncture in time, spend the rest of our substitute and custodial overtime. So you'll see numbers still there, but that's because we expensed those as incurred. On the expense side, one thing I did was dig a little into analyzing what we've spent to date on our plants and facilities, because we have, we are almost at our budget level for this, and it's a little early in the year to be that close to hitting budget. So I wanted to just sort of, I know I see it as it's coming through, but look at the big picture and sort of just give you some background as to what we sort of encountered this year, and some of it has just been within the last two months. We had a water leak in our main water line right out in Junction Street. I don't know if you saw, the street was closed off a little bit to have that repaired. That was our responsibility to repair, and that was about $9,000 expense. We've had two major compressor replacements and one control board. That, each compressor was a little under $9,500, and the control board was like $7,000, so that's the $27,000 that, we normally don't have that volume in one year. As Mr. Kelly has been telling me, all this equipment is about now approaching its 15th year, so we are going to start seeing more of those. In fact, he just told me today that there's another control board that needs to be replaced. So we're sort of at that point where we've actually really maintained our equipment well, but it only lasts for so long. And so that is, that's been part of what's happening this year. We've also, if you remember, there were some pretty big potholes at the Junction Street entrance, so we had those repaired, and some other places in the lots that were not slated to be paved. So we obviously didn't prepare any areas that are going to be paved next year, but areas that are off for another year or two. And that was a little bit more out of our normal operating, so that was $7,200. In addition, if you remember, the fire control panel project continued on into the summer, and we had additional $10,000 that we had to absorb in the operating fund because of that. So all in all, we really are at, at our budget right now of $180,000. So I'm going to continue to work with Mr. Kelly and see what we anticipate. We can't anticipate everything upcoming forward, but knowing that there's some other areas in our budget where we have some funds potentially left over, I may request a line item transfer so that we can keep fixing these things as they come up, since we have the funds in this year's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you keep talking about a control board...
Yeah.
For what?
For the, for the...
It's part of the heating and air...
Exactly.
Okay. Yes, all right.
Same thing with the compressors as well.
Yes, it's all part of the same...
And I will put together, one thing I've asked Mr. Kelly to do is, because I sit there and I say, Mr. Kelly, how can we have all these? So we're putting together a whole inventory of all of our fans, our compressors, our motors, so that, we have 96 exhaust fans sitting over there. So we're going to actually start tracking it, not, he probably does already, but I'm going to have it in a way that I can understand it, of like, so I know how many more that we have to complete that haven't been, you know, either retrofitted or...
Is this part of onsite insight?
It is.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
But I want to know detail, like RTU5, I mean...
Yes. It's a very big, it's not just like my furnace.
So that I know what our potential is for continued replacements.
Fabulous. Thank you for being honest.
That's middle and high school, because they both came up at the same time.
Yeah.
I mean, weren't they, were they installed in the middle school?
Just about a year. Right. I mean, they're, they're pretty close together.
So, the, right now, we're sitting here, we've encumbered the salaries that we know of, but the fact that we're sitting here with $600,000 of a $24 million budget, that is unbelievable. That's great, but there's still other things, it's not like we're going to end the year at $600,000.
No, no, because we still have, I still have spring sports, I have the coaches' expense, but still like all the other costs. And a lot of the purchases that the school do on an annual basis, they don't encumber every, everything. We encumber what we know, the big things, but the everyday purchases of things just happen. You'll notice on a monthly basis, it goes up and down. We've tried to encumber those things that we can reasonably estimate, like our utilities, our healthcare, services that we know we're going to have provided, but it's the, just some of the normal operating expenses of the schools, the supplies, that kind of stuff, they don't encumber.
Got it.
They just, you know, put the purchase orders in and buy them, and then we expense them like that.
Okay.
So, in the conversation about the expenses and repairs in the FY18 report, that's
the custodial services line.
That is.
Correct, okay.
And next year in your budget, though...
Then my next question is then, but now I go to the budget, and I see that in three different places. Custodial services...
Grounds and...
Maintenance of grounds and maintenance of buildings.
Exactly.
So just to refresh, we're stripping out some of those things that you talked just about, the fans that break and those things, they have their own line now, and then...
Yes, the plants and facilities reserve. So when you see that, that's where all of that work takes place.
And then some of the waste treatment costs, things of that nature.
Yes.
Okay.
So there's contracted services, and that's all of our preventative maintenance contracts that we have, and our trash removal, and some of those just routine stuff. That's up into contracted services for maintenance, plants, facilities.
Okay. And so what, what stays in custodial services besides our employees?
The custodial supplies, the paper products, the cleaning supplies.
Okay, and that's it?
Yep.
But if the machine that they're...
That would be in the equipment. There's a line item for equipment, right. So we've taken custodial services and broken it down to three different categories, and that again is more in compliance with the end of the year reporting.
I just wanted to be able to...
Correct. Right. By me, by us doing this, we don't have to sit there and crosswalk everything. We'll just be able to, my goal is to print a general underreport, and it does go right into the file.
To what the state, what the state's charter of accounts is.
So no manual.
Exactly. Two pencil.
But it's also better for you guys to see that there's that much custodial services. You're like, what the heck are they doing? How much toilet paper are they using over there? So it's better management for you too.
And you may have spoken to this in the past, but right now with employee healthcare, we're over budget by 42,000.
Right, but remember, that's not just healthcare. That's workers' comp insurance, that's the Medicare tax, it's life insurance and healthcare.
And so what, what drove that piece?
So that piece is, part of it is the Medicare psych attacks that I said that we have, we've been trying to rectify, and we were over last year, so I've upped that in 19's budget, but we're over this year in Medicare employer tax. But I think the chunk of it is we are over in healthcare. I think we, I think my report said $30,000, but that was partially offset by our retiree of being positive of 20.
And was this in part where you mentioned in the past that some employers are now saying to their employees...
Yeah, we're seeing...
Get onto your spouse's plan. And we, so some of ours who may not have been on, came on.
So that's what they did, the large portion of those plan changes that you then rolled forward into FY19's budget.
Right.
They're really plan changes that already happened with FY18 budgeting.
Well, that plus their anticipated changes.
Yeah, yeah, plus, so it was a combination of what happened where we were off.
Because when I first looked at this, like in December, we actually were right on with our, our $50,000 plan changes actually was covering what we needed. But as you know, most employers outside of municipalities...
Our calendar.
Calendar, and that's where we started seeing people come on in January and February.
So, so how is that a, whatever event they call it?
Qualifying.
Yeah, how is it a qualifying event, saying, oh, we decided to drop coverage of my...
That's a good question.
Employer.
Because that is in their cycle on the, it's their cycles.
So then they are, we have an employee here who no longer technically has, because they work and have access to insurance, they don't have healthcare coverage where they used to, and now they have to pick it up here.
Even if it's at their own, that they chose to choice.
It's not like they lost their job.
You got married.
Yeah, but it wasn't their choice, because what the employers say is, if your spouse has access, then we won't cover you anymore.
Okay, I got it. Okay, so it's forced.
Yes.
Yes.
Most of this, most of what we saw was...
Were forced.
Was forced.
Right.
And it was the outside pressures of, right?
Yeah. No, I got asked that question last time I called into United Healthcare.
Yeah. So that's, that's the caveat.
So I think I, what I said in, you know, one of the things that we'll do is in March, just start looking more forward, and I will encumber as much as we know for. I mean, high school's really good, they've already encumbered a lot of their graduation expenses, but I'm sure there's more we can encumber. The sports will be up and running, I want the rest of their numbers encumbered, and we'll really start seeing where we are. And I want to do that because I do want to ask for a transfer, I think, of plant facilities. There's quite a bit of work that we can go ahead and forge and do, and know that we won't have to be caught short next year.
Continued attention and meticulous detail to all.
Sorry that your Sunday without electricity was our game.
Sorry about your heat.
That'd be a place to go and turn my phone.
So, Don, we'll stay with the annual vote, no, vote to certify the FY19 operating budget. Do you have a motion for me?
No, I handed it to you.
Oh, you handed it to me? Okay, sorry. I got it separately. So for new members, just so you are aware, we need to take a vote to certify the operating budget that we provide to both towns. This is, the date by which we have to do this is determined in the regional agreement, 45 days before the first of the town meetings. And we colloquially refer to this as a high watermark. So if things occur that mean we would have to make changes to our budget, it can go down, but it can't go any higher. So that's why we usually wait till that 45 days, or closer to that 45 days before the first town meeting to have this vote, so that we have as good a number as we possibly can. So our high watermark number to certify tonight is the $24,614,816. And then we would have a second motion to utilize the E and D portion. Would you like me to read the motion? Well, usually I do is invite the chair, and then you guys can do it. Too many numbers. So I will invite a motion to, that says, and Amy, it's in text for you, the 2018-19 budget in the amount of $24,614,816, reduced by estimated receipts and available funds in the amount of $3,67,633, for a net amount to be assessed to the member towns of $20,547,183. This assessment is comprised of $20,543,583 in operating expenses and $1,3,600 in debt expenses, and that the treasurer be authorized to certify this budget in the apportioned share of each town based on the statutory method. Second. Motion, Dana, the second? Oh, I do, okay. From someone? Second. Lori, discussion? Those, Michael?
So, I'm comfortable with one element of it, but I feel constrained to express reasons for my uncomfort until we're in executive session.
Okay, so we can always amend it another time.
So...
Okay, thank you.
That's why I think I'll be abstaining from, from the vote on A.
Okay, thank you. Totally understand. Anyone else? Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining? Got that, Amy? Thank you, motion carries. A motion, I invite a motion that reads, "The utilization of $150,000 as of June 30, 2018, certified excess and deficiency funds to reduce the FY19 assessments." A motion?
So moved.
Second. Michael, thank you, and discussion? Those in favor? Motion carries. Okay. High watermark certification achieved. Next is a, our annual vote on Massachusetts School Choice, which we've talked about in terms of our students going elsewhere. This vote is in terms of students coming to DS. Did you want to speak to it at all, Dr. Q?
Just that I know that in the past Dover Sherbin has not taken advantage of this. The cost to educate a student here is well into the upper teens, whereas you'd be granted $5,000 per student who came here, and you would be required to educate those students until they left. And I think that's probably why Dover Sherbin has not participated for as long as they haven't, so...
In capacity.
In capacity, right.
In capacity, yes.
Some systems actually have space that's going unused, so it's attractive to them. That's not a problem we have. So my suggestion is to maintain your current practice of not participating.
So I will invite a motion to approve that the Dover Sherbin Regional Schools do not participate in the school choice program for the 2018-2019 school year. So moved. Second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
I...
No, we didn't do February 8th. Next is the consensus agenda. There are not any athletic donations that I am aware of, so we'll cross that off.
There's one, there's one.
You have $1,400 for...
It was done in the...
It's...
We didn't approve those at the last...
No. No. Sorry, I didn't see that.
Yes, sorry, there is one.
There is one. Dover Sherwin Hockey, $1,400 for an assistant coach, I believe.
From the Needham Bank.
From the Needham Bank.
No, it's not, it's a parent group.
It's from the hockey club.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Sorry.
Dover Sherwin Hockey Club is a 501(c)(3) organization.
So are there any more of these paid volunteer positions floating around?
Many.
Many.
Many. Every month we vote.
I bet in general.
Are there any other winter ones?
Since we're in unpaid, we're an unpaid volunteer situation here.
You wanna get a parent group to sponsor you? Could the hockey club pass?
But I think, they sort of come in based on the.
John, can you just double check if there are any winter ones?
I will, John.
I don't know, skiing or indoor track?
I don't believe so. No, I don't believe that there are anymore, but we're still last one.
I've lost track of what we have. So I'll invite a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor?
I'm abstaining just because I was not at that meeting.
Okay.
You can, that's fine. Speak to the accuracy of the conversation.
And we note the communications, a thank you letter to Middlesex Banks for the $50,000 they donated to Dover Sherwin Education Fund, which was part of a much larger donation to 24 community education funds, so thank you, Middlesex Banks.
Thank you, Middlesex Banks. We're grateful.
And we note the Sherwin School Committee minutes of January 16th, and not on our agenda is April agenda items. Whether it's April or May, I believe our athletic fields subcommittee and boosters would like to come before us, and we will have a conversation to figure out whether that's April or May to talk about their upcoming plans.
Fabulous.
Do you think we can get the help head committee scheduled with our actuary so that by April or May, we can come back with some of our?
I don't know about that.
I think that based on the timing, we know this year is like past, and that we have up into next year's budget, so we'll have to see.
But, but, no, just the meeting, just to have a meeting scheduled with the actuary, because I think there's some research before we even.
Right.
Talk about things that we should be considering down the road and continue our dialogue.
Yeah.
So this is more data collection rather than getting to.
I'll put an email to him and see his flexibility once the weather, like, because I think he comes from, we'll see how we'll look that out, like, okay, get on my list.
Did anybody else have any other?
Nope.
I did have a question, because I wasn't sure if it was, if it comes to the school committee, the Challenge Success Survey, John, does that, do they do an executive summary that comes?
Yes, so we just had a, a meeting, and I was asked to ask the regional school committee if the regional school committee would like to see the executive summary from the most recent survey results from Challenge Success.
Of course.
So, when would you, when would we like to do that?
You mean someone to come and talk to us for a little bit?
Yeah, it would probably be me, it would be Ellen, and perhaps Pam Webb.
That might work for April, if it works in their schedule.
We just have a joint, or just joint, or it might be optional.
Is April joint, all right, so it might have to be May.
Okay. Shouldn't, I mean, isn't it reasonable to have a Challenge Success discussion in a K-12 environment?
If it's wrong.
I know Sherwin was interested.
Yeah.
They each have their own Challenge Success group.
I can imagine.
Right, but it's.
I think it gives the.
So, perhaps we ask Mr. Smith to speak to the Challenge Success people and determine whether K-12 or.
Okay, sure.
Elementary focused.
Yeah, and there's no doubt, we've approached this from a K-12 perspective, the, the only caveat will be that the data is really high school driven, but that doesn't mean that it can't be wrong.
So that should probably be at one of our meetings, yeah.
The interventions and things that we're thinking about even as early as elementary school eventually are to.
Sure.
And I think that the parents in that community are curious as well, because their kids are headed in this direction, so informational about what we're doing, I think.
So we'll have a look to see what else is.
Thank you.
That's the superintendent evaluation, as I recall.
Yep.
And then any summary around the college.
You talking about the joint?
Yeah.
Level?
Yes.
All right, and that's also the strategic plan?
That was in the last one, so then we can do a follow-up if there are questions from that.
That was in our, that was in our packet last month, so it might have to be May. But we did not have a presentation on it, correct?
I know.
Yeah.
Key findings from it, yeah.
Yeah. I can forward it to you if you want, I have it.
From last week?
No, from like last month. What are you guys discussing? February.
Yes.
The college.
Yeah, you've already done that, yeah. It may end up being May if we're doing strategic plan at the April joint meeting. We'll, there's a chairs meeting this week, so.
Sure, either one is fine, we'll make either one work.
It's in your customary.
Yep, I do.